The Planning Commission meeting of December 6, 2023 will come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The secretary will call roll.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Mann?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy? Vice Chairperson Rice?
Here.
Chairperson Tolson?
Here. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda?
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion was made by Vice Chairman Rice and a second by Commissioner Mayor. Unless there are objections, the agenda stands approved. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes from October 18, 2023?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, give a second.
I'll second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Mayor and a second by Commissioner Mann. Unless there are any objections, the minutes are approved. The secretary will read the Declaration of Conflict.
If any member of the Planning Commission may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Okay. This is the time allotted for public statements on comments on items that are other than public hearing items. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to be heard? Wonderful. Is there any correspondence from the Deputy Director or City Planner?
Yes, Chairman Tolson, we received two supplemental staff reports for item 11A.2. One is a neighborhood council update to the item, and the second supplemental report, our two correspondents received regarding that agenda item.
Thank you. We received those via email and in person here prior to tonight's start. May I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you very much. I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Fantastic. A motion made was, a motion was made by Commissioner Mayor and a second by Vice Chairman Rice. Unless there are other objections, the consent calendar stands approved. So now we are at... New business. This is the time and place set aside for a public hearing on the consideration of PD-S-2023-0007, requests for a three-year time extension to construct a 28-unit, three-story senior apartment building with three affordable units and the determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Are there any ex parte communications to report? May I have an oral report on this matter by staff?
Yes, Chairman Tolson and members of the commission, I'll turn your presentation over to Associate Planner Caesar Hernandez.
Good evening, commissioners. The applicant, Fabio Malik, is requesting a three-year time extension to approve project number PDS 1046 to allow the construction of a 28-unit, three-story senior apartment building with three affordable units. The applicant is eligible for a second three-year time extension at the discretion of Planning Commission, provided that the applicant files a renewal application prior to the expiration of the permit and complies with the required findings. The project site is located at 1424 Patricia Avenue. The site is surrounded by two and three-story multifamily residences to the north and east. To the west is an existing single-family residential property that recently received approval for a three-story condominium development. Adjacent to the south side of the project site is the Arroyo Simi with single-family story residence beyond as shown in this aerial map. On December 11, 2017, City Council approved PDS 1046 and Affordable Housing Agreement Number AH-8R-63. As part of the Affordable Housing Agreement, three units are designated for low-income seniors who are 62 years or older for a 55-year term. On December 20, December 10, 2020, the first three-year administrative time extension was approved due to the economic impacts from COVID-19. On August 23, 2023, the applicant filed for a second three-year time extension due to the lasting economic impacts from COVID-19 pandemic, increasing costs of materials and unstable real estate market. There are no changes to the approved design and no construction is proposed at this time. The time extension would extend the expiration date from December 11, 2023 to December 11, 2026. This is the proposed site and landscape plan with Patricia Avenue on the right and Arroyo Simi on the left. The site plan also shows the proposed parking for the units. The project includes a three-story building with 21 unit bedrooms and eight two-bedroom units. And parking will be provided tuck under the apartment units. The architectural design is a Spanish Revival stuccled building. The project consists of 21-bedroom apartments ranging in size from 662 to 670 square feet and eight two-bedroom apartments at 825 square feet, and this shows the third floor plan. The architectural style of the building is Spanish Revival and is similar to the recently approved projects in the area. Exterior materials include concrete as tile roofing, tan and off-white stucco walls and trim, stacked stone projections, and bronze-finished metal elements that are incorporated in the railings on the balconies and gates for the parking areas. The front of the building facing Patricia Avenue includes a roofed entry, and the driveway will include decorative concrete. The rear of the building facing Arroyo Simi also includes enriched landscaping, a common patio that will include a small outdoor cooking area and a roofed entry. Looking at the slide, you'll see the west elevation. The top is the partial elevation to the right using Patricia Avenue as orientation, and the bottom is the extension of the same building of the west elevation. So this is all one. You're also looking at the east elevation, partial elevation to the left, Patricia Avenue as orientation, and the bottom portion is still the extension of this building. So it's just one building that you're looking at. And here are the perspectives of the proposed apartment complex. On the left is the street frontage from Patricia, and on the right is the rear elevation from Arroyo Simi. If you look at the decorative concrete, the driveway entrance, you notice that they have, the applicant has recommended or suggested of installing a paper style throughout the driveway, all the way from the entry to the back. To grant a time extension, project findings are to be made pursuant to Simi Valley Municipal Code Section 9-71.030.E.5. Once again, there are no changes to the provisions of the general plan or the Development Code Regulations or the Development Guidelines, and there are no proposed changes to the project. It was determined that the project at the time of approval was categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15332 of the State Sequel Guidelines. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve PDS-2023-0007, a three-year time extension to approve project number PDS 1046.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from commissioners to the staff presentation? Commissioner Mayor?
How does that, this extension, if in any way, reflect on arena numbers that we have to meet? I'm sorry.
Are you referring to the fact that these units continuing to be approved are part of the arena numbers?
Yeah, I mean, are we still going to be in compliance in three years?
Oh, yes, I mean, this is already accounted for.
Yeah, these are accounted for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Would the applicant like to present the project? We have one card. Farshid Fabio Malik. Proceed to the front. Is there anything you want to say or the reasons why you're asking for this extension?
Yes, first of all, let me thank you for receiving me and hearing me. I thank the commission. My name is Fabio Malik. I've been a contractor since 1983. I've been doing development and owning apartments since 1987, and currently I do own and operate apartments, rentals, you know. And when we started this project, things, they were different, you know, and unfortunately, how the things turned out for me for two factors. One was the architect and some of the stuff that we chased, you know, to, you know, to make more space for different things. And then was, then the COVID happened, you know, and I was stuck with the architect that was sick and basically he did not continue the job. But this was after the planning approval, you know, so we were in the building department, you know. Even though if, if the building department would have approved it at this time for the amount, you know, this is like every other business, you know, you've got to see how much rent you can collect and how much loan you have to get, you know. At that time, I could do it, build a building for less than half what it costs today, you know, plus the interest rate, you know, I have to go borrow money. And before I didn't have to give personal guarantee, now I have to. And then, then how much money can you collect from 28 units, senior apartments, especially that their age is so high, is a smaller pool of the people to, to find and fill up and then basically does not cover, it doesn't pencil out, you know, at this time because, you know, the more, you know, loans are, you're talking about eight and a half a percent of interest. Before we were talking about 3.75, 4%, you know, and we could live with that. And the construction cost is like over twice as much. So even if we did get approval from building the apartment, this project could not be done at this time because, because of the inflation that's happened into construction field, you know. But it's my belief that inflation eventually is gonna, you know, even up in all the fields that's always is, you know, first the food and then this and that, and eventually everything is gonna go. But at this time, it just doesn't make sense, you know, and then I have to, you know, put myself in line for such a project. And basically after COVID, a lot of things has been changed, you know. For some people, well, it was a long time ago, yeah, but it was a big factor to, you know, you know, such a jump in the construction cost and now with the interest rate, you know. So it's just a matter of economics, you know, you have to see what you can do at the time, you know. We passed the very first time that we, I came to this commission, we passed it the very first time, you know, it's a pleasant-looking building, it's a nice-looking building, it's very functional. I owned and operated apartment for years, you know, I believe in it, but economic-wise, doesn't make sense right now because especially being the seniors apartment, they're as usually about 10% less than other apartments, you know, the rents. And for the amount of rent that you can collect, you know, you can just cover all these costs. I mean, you can, but you're not gonna just take chances, you know, because it's, even though right next to me, there are other people that they have town, they're developing townhomes, you know, 24-town homes, you know, and townhomes are selling pretty good right now in Simi Valley, you know, they are not even doing it, you know. Specifically in that part of Simi Valley, you know, because of the old Arroyo and how they filled, there is a lot of fill over there. So the groundwork is gonna cost even more. I have a concrete deck at the first floor, you know, that, that is costly too. And it's really designed as a luxury apartment, you know, for seniors, and that also adds up to the cost, you know, we have a lot of space, we have a lot of rec room, gym, I mean, stuff like that, offices and stuff that you don't really need it for regular apartments. But all that space adds up to the cost, you know, it's just about how many square foot you're building, that, that's what it costs, you know. So the cost is higher, the rents are not, did not go up as much. A lot of people, they talk about the rents going up, and I tell you, I'm an apartment owner, I prefer everything the way it was before COVID because even though we increased the rents a couple of times, we cannot catch up even with the utility and taxes, you know. So this is what I'm trying to say is that at this time, unfortunately, I put a lot of money in line, I don't owe anything here, I paid a lot of money for, you know, all the engineers and architect and all the other consultants that they work here. So I didn't want to do something that I'm not gonna get something out of it. So I don't want to just get deeper into this, you know, mid-off. And as I said, the people next to me, they are building townhomes that they're selling pretty good, they are much better situation than I am, and they don't want to do it neither because of the construction cost, it just doesn't, it's enormous, it's like almost 2.3 times of, of what I, I was planning to do, you know. So I'm requesting this extension to see how this inflation and everything else is gonna come together, it's just gonna give us a little more time, you know. Land doesn't go anywhere and the project is good. So, you know, I'm requesting this extension for, you know, benefit of the project because you can't build a project that doesn't pencil out, that's basically what it is, you know.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate for your time.
Sure. Do we have any questions of the applicant? Thank you for your time. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to be heard on this matter? And... Any discussion before we have a reading of the resolution? Go ahead.
Mr. Malik, first of all, thank you for your honesty. I really appreciate that, and I understand the economy and everything. I just wanted to ask you if everything is right, like the way we all want to be, where do you see this project in three years?
Do you know what is gonna happen to next year with the elections or whatever else is happening? I'm just like everybody else, you know? I just take it as a day at a time and try to survive because I'm a businessman, you know. I'm past the point that I have to be that worried that I can't sleep at night, that's why I have to do things in a way that, you know, is more secure. But as I said, and I saw, you know, I, I'm 67 years old, I've seen these inflations coming and going, but when they go up, they never come down, but eventually everything evolves up. So there must be a point that they make sense, you know, the prices, the rents and everything else. But when the inflations start, they always start, I don't know, like with food and gas and, you know, and some building material and wood and this, but eventually everything is gonna come up, you know, the same way. This is always, but it, it will take time. But at this time, if we built this thing before COVID, we were talking about $4 million of, of loan, you know, at 3.75% interest, you know. Now we are talking about seven and a half, eight million dollars maybe, who knows, you know, something like that of loan and eight and a half a percent of interest. It doesn't even cough, I mean, how much can you make out of 28, can you get out of 28 seniors, you know? So this is how it is right now, and honestly, I'm telling you, this is not only my situation, as I said, the people next to me, you know, I, I know that townhomes, they are selling like hotcakes, you know, over $700,000 right now in Simi Valley, and these guys, they have 24 of them, and they have been my neighbors for years, they have been working on the project same time as I did, and they don't want to build it. And the reason is the same thing, is the construction cost and the, and the interest rate, you know, because we have to pay it before we can collect anything from anybody.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, we have to, you know, and I then, before I didn't have to give personal guarantee for these loans, now I have to. So if I don't come up right, then they come and take whatever else I got, you know.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your honesty, thank you.
Any other questions to the applicant? Any comments from staff on this project?
No other comments.
Okay. Having heard none, if there are any other discussion, may I please have a reading of the resolution?
Resolution number SVPC 13-2023. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley approving planned development permit PD-S-2023-0007 for a three-year time extension to a previously approved project PD-S-1046 for the construction of a 28-unit, three-story senior apartment for the construction of a twenty eight unit, three story senior apartment building with three affordable units located at fourteen twenty four Patricia Avenue and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution adopting PDS two zero two three zero 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 seven and a request for a three year time extension to construct the twenty eight unit, three story senior apartment building with, with three affordable units and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
A motion was made by Vice Chair Rice. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Call for the vote. The motion passes. Congratulations. Before we move on, you have.
Chairman Tolson, if I could interrupt before we go to the next item.
You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Malik. What I wanted to mention to the Planning Commission is to let everyone know that we're losing Caesar Hernandez tonight. Caesar's been with us since August of twenty nineteen. He'll be moving on to bigger and better things. One, a couple of things you don't know, he was a key participant in the Tappo Commerce Center Industrial Project at Tappo Canyon in Los Angeles, the extra space industrial storage project over by the S turn. Nearly all of our wireless telecommunication permits and endless conversations with the general public on their plan checks, zoning inquiries and whatnot. He's been a great help for the city of Simi Valley, very committed, and we wish him the best.
Okay, you're, you're good to go, but you're welcome to stay. Okay. This is the time and place set for a public hearing on the consideration of Z dash S dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero five, a recommendation by staff to amend portions of title line of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to establish development standards and modify design guidelines for residential accessory structures and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. May we have an oral report by, on this matter by staff?
Yes, Chairman Tolson and members of the Commission, our Associate Planner Alex Klingman will have the presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Tonight, we will be discussing municipal code text amendments and design updates for residential accessory structures. The community has expressed concerns over current policies that restrict the size and material of residential accessory structures. Staff presented potential code and design changes to the Planning Commission in March and to all four neighborhood councils in November. Based on the feedback that was received, staff has prepared amendments for discussion this evening. Accessory structures are defined in the Simi Valley Municipal Code as any structure that is customarily a part of and clearly incidental to a residence, does not change the character of the residential use and is a non-habitable space. These can include garages, workshops and storage sheds, but are separate from accessory dwelling units and cargo containers, which have their own standards in the code. In the mid two thousands, the city enacted policies that restrict the size and design of residential accessory structures. This slide shows the city's current handout that staff uses to implement these policies at the counter. The main goal of the proposed amendments is to codify size restrictions and modify non-objective design guidelines. Currently, accessory structures are limited to a maximum size of thirty percent of the main house or twelve hundred square feet, whichever is less. And in animal overlay zones, structures that are used to house farm animals such as barns and stables can be up to two thousand square feet in size. One of the most common requests that staff gets at the counter is to increase the size of accessory structures beyond what this policy allows. Based on these community requests and the Planning Commission's feedback, the amendments will codify the size limitations as shown here on the slide. On the left-hand side is the city's current policy and on the right-hand side are the proposed code changes. On properties less than one acre, the maximum size allowed would continue to be thirty percent of the square footage of the house or twelve hundred square feet, whichever is less. And this amendment would allow an increase up to two thousand square feet with an administrative action, regardless of the zone. On properties one acre or more, the maximum size allowed would be thirty percent of the square footage of the house or two thousand square feet, whichever is less. And this could be increased beyond two thousand square feet with a conditional use permit, regardless of the zone. Currently, the way that the thirty percent is calculated is based on the total square footage of the main house excluding garages, patio covers and porches. The amendment will codify the rule that the thirty percent should be calculated based on the first floor, including any attached garages. This would still exclude patio covers and porches. Another limitation of the current policy is that only barns and stables can go up to two thousand square feet in size when located in an animal overlay zone. The proposed changes would allow larger sized structures for uses such as garages, carports or workshops with the administrative action or CUP process, regardless of the zone. The reason for this proposed change is to eliminate permitting conflicts that arise from homeowners wanting to build large metal structures resembling barns but are being used for RV garages or other non-animal keeping uses. Currently, there is no limit on the number of accessory structures that can be placed on a property so long as they can comply with setback, lot coverage and separation requirements. This amendment poses a restriction that on properties less than one acre, structures over twelve hundred square, square feet in size are limited to a maximum of two per lot, inclusive of ADUs. Properties one acre or more would continue to have no limit. Under the city's current design guidelines, accessory structures larger than one hundred twenty square feet are required to match colors and materials and roof slope to the main house through the use of stucco, wood, brick and stone, as shown in the image here. Based on the Planning Commission's feedback and to eliminate non-objective language, the design guidelines for residential accessory structures will be updated as shown here on the slide. Structures five hundred square feet or less must match at least, at least one color to the main home. Structures five hundred square feet in size and or over twelve feet in height must match one color and one material to the main home and the roof color and material must also match and include eaves. Structures on properties one acre or more or in animal overlay zones only need to provide eaves when the structure is over five hundred square feet in size. Currently, metal structures are restricted to animal overlay zones and are only allowed for barns and stables. The proposed guidelines will be amended to allow metal to be used as a material for all accessory structures, regardless of the zone. These structures would still be required to comply with the proposed design guidelines and development standards of the code. The slide here shows some examples of acceptable metal structures. This is another common request that we get at the counter since metal or prefab structures have become increasingly popular and tend to be more affordable than traditional structures made of wood or timber. In November, staff presented the proposed changes to all four neighborhood councils and received a recommendation for approval by all except Neighborhood Council Number Two. All four neighborhood councils expressed their concerns regarding allowing multiple accessory structures, ADUs and cargo containers on a single property. It was explained that currently there is no limit to the number of accessory structures that can be built on a residential lot. However, the proposed ordinance aims to limit accessory structures that are over twelve hundred square feet or larger in size to a maximum of two per lot, inclusive of ADUs. It was also explained that there are specific development standards in the code for ADUs and cargo containers that limit how many of these structures can be placed on a residential property. For example, only one detached ADU is allowed per lot and only one cargo container is allowed on lots twenty thousand square feet or greater. It is important to note that ADUs and cargo containers are separate from the proposed code policy, code and policy amendments and are subject to their own development standards. Other concerns that were brought up during the NC meetings were regarding HOA regulations, painting prefab structures and existing non-compliant structures in enforcement. Responses to those questions and concerns were provided to you as a supplemental report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number twelve dash twenty twenty three and recommend to the City Council the proposed amendments and authorize the Environmental Services Director to establish design guidelines for residential accessory structures. This concludes our presentation and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Klingman. Any questions for staff?
I do have one.
Vice Chair?
So we would wanna put a, a limit of two structures on a property that is less than one acre, but absolutely no limit on a property that's one acre. So if I had one acre, I could put, I could just fill up my whole property with.
Which is what the current rule is.
Right, exactly. But if I'm barely below an acre, I'm limited to two, but if I'm right at an acre, I could just go crazy.
Yep.
Okay.
That's as written if the Planning Commission could make suggestions or revisions.
Well, I, I, that's, I kinda have that written down here. That's what I was kinda wondering, I wonder if there should be like a number and anything above that maybe as an administrative approval or, or whatever would be a... I don't know, but then again, that kind, you know, I mean, but if you had twenty acre property, that would be like, I mean, if it's a bigger property, then I don't see that being an issue at all, but if it was a... It's almost like there should be some sort of middle, like there should be a three tier system rather than a two tier system.
So one, one option could be if you wanna limit two for properties less than an acre, but if you want, if some reason you want three that are over twelve hundred square feet, you could do an administrative action as a, to have more than two.
Well, if somebody wanted more than two for whatever reason, then, then maybe it's an administrative action? What, what is, the, the lowest thing would be an administrative action, correct?
Yeah, that's the next lowest thing.
Correct, so administrative action if they wanted more than two. But if you had a property that is, that is one acre to say five acres or something, or one acre to... One to five, then maybe four struc-, I don't know. Well, actually five acre, I mean, I don't know, that's... I don't know, I don't know how many structures, yeah, I don't know. If you had five acres, five structures doesn't seem like much at all.
Nope.
But one acre, five structures could be a lot too, so... I don't know, boy, that's, boy, it's getting to be a slippery slope here now. Oh, yeah, you can have all kinds of things and.
And cargo containers.
Cargo containers, yeah.
So for one acre. There are some setbacks, so.
So.
I like your train of thought, so I would have no problem with if we wanted to try and figure out one to five acres, put up a limit or more with an administrative hearing because some five acre parcels are gonna be situated differently than a three acre parcel.
I think.
But then you're putting personal judgment into it.
I think maybe one to two acres maybe should be instead of one to five.
Okay.
There you go.
One to two to four?
To, yeah, maybe four and if they want more than four, then an administrative action, does that seem logical?
For one to two acres.
One to two acres.
And then over two acres, are you going to no limit?
I don't, I don't even know that we even put a limit on.
I just wanna, I think we're, we're maybe veering into discussion here, which I think is probably better capping to a, a later part of this before we.
You got it.
We gotta go have public comment first.
Okay, all right.
Questions of staff at this point?
Questions of staff?
Okay.
Does that seem? Okay, can we throw that at staff then?
Any, any comments from staff on that?
Yeah.
Question?
We can explore the, the option of doing something like that, maybe come back with an amendment.
Right. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions from staff?
Yes. Is there a difference between attached or detached accessory structures in this thing?
This would apply to detached accessory structures.
Okay, in page four of my thing, policy changes. So under the current policy or under the proposed policy, are we allowing residential accessory structures cannot be habitable space, i.e. no heating or air is allowed? Is that current or is that proposed?
That is current. These accessory structures are meant to be non-habitable spaces, so we don't allow any air conditioning, any heating.
But if somebody wants to have a workshop, why can they not have an air conditioner in a workshop? What makes an air conditioned space habitable space?
I believe that is something addressed in the building code.
Okay.
That'll be a building code definition, it's, if it's not habitable, you can't do certain things, if it's habitable, certain things are included. So the portable air conditioner might be a nuance of that, but our building code would clearly define if it's habitable or not.
Okay.
But if I could jump in on that? Does that mean they could have a, like a ductless system or is it, would a ductless system be a?
I think a ductless system would be more of a portable system, but.
Would that count as a portable system or is that a?
Oh, like a mini split system?
Yeah, exactly.
I think, I think we have to look at, or somebody has to look what the building code will allow.
These are questions to staff.
Yes, sorry, I know we're venturing off again.
If we come back with proposed amendments, we can clarify what defines a habitable space per the building code.
Okay, yeah, cuz I'm, I'm just thinking that if somebody wants to have a workshop or they wanna work on, you know, restoring cars or woodworking, if it's a hundred twenty degrees outside, they may wanna have an air conditioner in their workshop and that doesn't necessarily, in my opinion, rise to the level of being a habitable space.
So that's, you know, we allow workshops already, so that's already allowed. So if some people have air conditioners, they're probably already non-habitable.
But are air conditioners allowed in a workshop?
No.
Well, it depends on if it's a portable versus a hardwired, so to speak.
Can I just add, yeah, according to building code, if it's a permanent AC or heating, then that's conditioned space. So that's livable space, that's how the building code defines it.
Okay.
I believe if you bring like a portable AC, which you can take away and put back in, that doesn't count.
Okay. Kinda, kinda cutting hairs there, whether or not I cut a hole in the wall, I put a quote unquote portable in or I put a mini split ductless system in, you know, probably something short of a full FAU with venting and ducting and everything else, I can understand.
Yeah, so if you, if you, what you're showing on the plans is integrated into the structure for conditioning.
Right.
Then that is not allowed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so from that, if I, if I put a portable in, I'm okay, but if I put ducts in, I'm not okay.
Correct.
That's how I would view as conditioned space, part of the structure. So if I just cut a hole in the wall, that's not part of the structure. But if I put in a ducted, ducted system, that's part of the structure.
Correct, but however, if you cut a hole in the wall, you're potentially affecting the structural integrity of your structure and in violation of your building permit.
Let's take a window out and put it in.
And, and. Commissioner Rea, you have a question for staff?
Yes, do these have a path to become ADUs, like habitable?
If, if they do not already have a detached ADU on site, then they can convert that to an ADU. Because on the ADU law, you can convert an existing permitted structure to an. an accessory dwelling unit. However, if they already have a detached ADU on site, and they build a garage, or whatever it is, they cannot convert that to an ADU, unless state law changes.
Thank you.
But under current state law, that's how it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Uh, one more. In page 21 in, in your pictures, the, the, you had a metal building, I don't know if, I didn't see a slide of it, but acceptable metal buildings, I can see what they are, then you have examples of non-acceptable accessory structure designs, half-structures, carport-type things, one is what I call Morrison Building, then you have another one that looks very similar to one that's an approved one. It's a black building with big red doors, that is listed as non-acceptable, but I'm not sure what the difference is other than the roof line from another one that is acceptable.
That particular example is, if it is over 500 square feet in size, it would have required Eves, and in this example, there are no Eves.
Got it. That's no Eves, okay. I knew there was a reason I was missing it. Thank you. That's it for me.
Any other questions of staff? All right, hearing none. Uh, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to be heard on this matter? Should we have you fill out a card? Mr. Bromberg, you step over here and... Okay.
You can have him do it after.
Yeah, you can talk down and fill out a card after.
Come, come up to the front and, we'll, we'll time you and everything.
Just gonna suggest that if we're talking about two units on a property that are less than an acre, and we're discussing or debating how many on a unit or property that is in excess of an acre, and it's, I think what I understood was unlimited, why wouldn't we come up with a formula that is two per acre? So if you have a five-acre parcel, you're allowed up to 10 units, and it's consistent with the size of the property, opposed to two maximum for an acre or less than an acre, and unlimited is what I thought I understood, if it's in excess of an acre. Is that what I understood correctly? Yeah. So if it's two acres, you can have up to four prop, four units. That's all. Does that make sense?
Sure makes a lot of sense. We're gonna have you fill out a card, and we're sure glad you came.
We like the outside of our...
And then, Narin, can you help him make sure he gets the right numbers and all that stuff? Anybody else have an idea? Come on up. Just for the fun of it, state your name, and then we'll make sure that we correspond with your...
Yeah, hi, my name's Rick Barger. I live up in the, the Bridle Path, and probably for like the past six months, I've actually been trying to get one of these metal structures approved, but with the code, we currently can't. But if you look left and right at me, people already have them. So if I'm for the, the change, my only suggestion would be, right now in animal overlay zones, we don't require an affirmative action for 2,000 square feet, so why are we changing that for us now, up there? So maybe in animal overlay zones, we don't need a affirmative action for up to 2,000 square feet still.
Perfect. So this is a time where you can state your, your comments, it's not like a dialogue back and forth, so I appreciate you doing that. Again, we're gonna step, have you step to your right and fill out that form, if there's anything else you want to share?
That's it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Are there any comments from staff regarding the statements made during the public hearing?
Alex, do you want to explain the difference on the 2,000 square feet in the animal overlay zone?
Yes, currently, as Rick mentioned, we do not require an AA in an animal overlay zone. We do allow a barn to be up to 2,000 square feet. The reason for the proposed change for us to require that AA is because we have had a lot of conflicts where people are using that barn use to get a larger metal structure, but really it's for like a garage or other type of structure, so, kind of keeping that, that policy the same won't really change, change anything.
And I'll, and I'll expand on that. The, the current policy, you could have an animal-keeping structure up to 2,000 square feet in animal overlay zones made of metal construction. We have found throughout the city, numerous occasions where the application comes in as an animal-keeping structure, i.e. barn, but it turns into a non-animal-keeping use such as vehicle storage, workshop, things of that nature, and to, with this proposed code changes, zoning would no longer regulate whether you keep farm animals, or RV garages, or workshops. We wouldn't have to judge that any further if the Planning Commission and Council agree. The, Mr. Barger's request is to ask if he could have any sort of structure up to 2,000 square feet without an administrative action. The staff's suggestion on the administrative action is to have some findings to make, to make sure that 2,000-square-foot structure is still appropriate. The building up to 30% of the main house square footage would still be allowed by right.
I'm just requesting that in animal overlay, though.
And, and member of the public is saying the, just for animal overlay zones as well, so that could be a nuance to any decision made.
Amendment, okay. Commissioner Mayor, you, I got you on the queue here. Let me clear that. Okay.
Okay, well, I have another question.
Commissioner Mayor?
So, in the Bridle Path, if I have a 2,000-square-foot home, I'm limited to a 600-square-foot building?
Currently, you're limited to a 600-square-foot accessory structure that is not a barn.
Right.
If it's a barn for animal-keeping, you're permitted 2,000 square feet. With the proposed ordinance, you could have a 600-square-foot garage, barn, or any other structure, structure max, maximum, or if you want to go between 601 and 2,000, you could apply for that barn, RV garage, et cetera, with an AA request.
Administrative hearing.
Administrative action.
Administrative action. And, I guess I'm gonna, the administrative action, what's looked at during the administrative action, is more conversation, as to what would determine that administrative action to be approved or denied?
We look at the aesthetics, compliance with their design guidelines, surroundings, and make sure there's no unusual situations. A administrative staff hearing may be required depending on potential concerns with the neighbors. It is appealable to the Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission, City Council will look at what's approved, to make sure the design and the location's appropriate, so gives us additional level of review.
So, people in, up in the Bridle Path, that have something larger than roughly 600-square-feet metal building, that don't have animals are in theory in violation, under the current code?
Unless they call it a barn.
Well, if it's a barn, it has to have an animal in it, I'm assuming. If there's an RV, if there's an RV in it, it's not an animal, it'd be in violation, correct?
That's a, that's a potential violation.
Okay, that's all.
Currently.
Currently. Currently, yes.
Good.
How much, how much cost does that add to a person?
So I'll refer to Ms. Klingman, she has a, I believe, a slide showing the approximate fees.
Oh, thank you.
You have that, Alex?
For an admin action, it would be approximately $1,825, not including any additional document scanning fees or potential site inspection or plan check fees.
And right now is zero for, for somebody who lives in Bridle Path?
Well, anywhere, it's a zoning clearance, and that's, that's a zoning clearance fee, which is $110 roughly.
So significantly more with the administrative action.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions for staff? Then we're gonna close the public port, testimony portion of the hearing. Now we're gonna have comments, questions from members of the Planning Commission amongst Sounds like we want to do a amendment to what's been proposed, to do the, well, we're gonna give some advice on what, how we want to continue. Up to, up to one acre is two structures as presented.
Up to, sorry, up to, up to one acre would be two structures if they want more than an administrative approval, and then, more than that, we want staff to look into it.
With a recommendation of two per acre?
Um, or...
Not?
Or something of that, oh, yeah, I think so. I mean, that seems logical.
I like the two per acre.
The only problem with that, though, but the only problem I see with that is that if you start doing that, though, you may be encouraging people, I mean, like, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know if that's the po...
I, I feel like it also, somebody would need to look at the property, because if you have like a slope, like that is three acres, and then you have one more acre, then it can't be that formula, in my opinion.
Yeah, and that's, that's the other thing.
So the wording could be changed to...
Usable acreage.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, or, yeah, so...
Potentially two per acre.
Potentially.
So, yeah, I don't know, so...
Okay. Any other, any other nuances that we want to suggest to staff before it's moved on to continue?
I, I want us to discuss this animal overlay a little bit, just because of that fee concern is so high, it's, the disparity of the costs is high, but I'm open to your opinions.
There, you know, we do these things so that our staff...
Yeah.
...generates money for them, for the work they're doing, right?
It's our cost recoveries regarding the fee, so...
Yeah, and I, I agree, just for a regular person to, to have to pay for that structure, and on top, I, I understand there needs to be rules, it's just a lot.
So if, if somebody has an acre of land in or out of the animal overlay, there potentially is a difference of an administrative hearing, because if I'm outside the animal overlay...
Yeah.
Versus inside, there's an $1,800 difference? Maybe...
And I understand it's really hard to regulate.
Yeah, that just doesn't seem fair.
Alex, can you go back to the...
Page...
AA provision, please?
Isn't that why we have zoning? I mean, isn't that what zones do?
So in any zone, not just the animal overlay, you could have a...
Administrative hearing, okay.
Administrative action for areas greater than 30% and up to 2, 2,000 square feet, regardless of animal overlay or non-animal overlay. If the property's over an acre, it's still 30% or 2,000 square feet without an administrative action, still whichever is less, and can be increased beyond 2,000 square feet with a conditional use permit regardless of zone, so...
Is a conditional use permit, generally speaking, less expensive than an administrative action?
No. Conditional use permit is like $6,000.
Yeah.
Okay. $7,000.
Yeah.
The conditional use permit would only be for prop, uh, people wanting over 2,000 square feet on properties over an acre.
Over 2,000 square feet?
Over 2,000 square feet per building.
But it's not over the 30%, so I can go over 30%, but under 2,000, and I'm not in a conditional use permit? Is that correct?
No, it says whichever is less.
Because a conditional use permit's gonna come to us.
Yeah, I know, but he has to spend $7,000 for a conditional use permit to come to us.
Yeah.
But, so if I'm over 30%, but under 2,000, do I have a CUP, or am I an administrative action if I'm in an animal overlay?
It's not the animal overlay, it's the...
It's the acreage?
It's the acre, so most of the animal overlays are larger properties, just to eliminate that, and I think the, I think the screen should need to clarify that for one acre or more, between 30% and 2,000 would also be an administrative action. Noren's shaking his head.
That's 30% of the square footage of the house, the first story, without forches.
Mm-hmm. And most of the Bridle Path is 2,000 square feet or less, so 30% of that, 600 square feet, we're trying to get above a 600-square-foot building.
Yes, in, in a nutshell, as written currently, that six, 700-square-foot limit is probably what you're gonna get on most of those homes.
Right.
Without having to do an administrative action. If the Planning Commission wants to allow all types of structures up to 1,200 or 2,000, well, actually, um, up to 2,000 square feet, that's, will open up a lot of additional non-barn structures that could be oversized sheds, garages, et cetera, so there might be an onslaught of those without keeping the accessory nature intact.
Yeah.
Which is subordinate to the size of the main house.
So, if I'm looking at that screen there, and excuse my ignorance here, if I have a property less than an acre, and let's assume I have a 2,000-square-foot home, my property is less than an acre, I have a 2,000-square-foot home, I can build 600 square feet without a problem if I want to go beyond six, I need to have an administrative action, correct?
Correct.
If I have one acre on my property, and my same 2,000-square-foot home, and I want to go above 2,000 square feet, I now have a conditional use permit instead, instead of the administrative action?
We clarified that the administrative action's also required for the one-acre property up to 2,000 if you build a very oversized structure like 2,400 square foot.
So beyond 2,000 is conditional use?
Yeah, that, that may actually come up to the Planning Commission.
Well, between 30 and 2,000 is the administrative action, above 2,000 is conditional use?
Correct.
Okay. Unless, of course, I want to build my quote-unquote "barn," put a chicken in it, and then I'm good. Because it's now, in the animal overlay, I can put a chicken in my 2,000-square-foot barn and not have an administrative action.
That's a current standard, and you would have to demonstrate that you're keeping animals legitimately.
Lots of chickens.
Or you put down, you put down two or three accessory units side by side.
Yes. Okay.
Over an acre.
It just, the cost of the administrative action just seems high, and I'm not sure exactly what, if any, we can do at this level to lessen that, that still makes it a, a win-win for both the citizens and for staff.
Inasmuch as we're gonna continue this...
Yeah.
They have the ideas of what we, what our concerns are, both costs and number of accessory units.
Correct.
For the acreages. Any questions from staff on what we're talking about?
And Chairman Tolson, the other option is to recommend approval with suggestions to revise the administrative action or the number of units per acre to move the project along, but if you'd like to bring it back with further clarification, that's also an option.
Can, can we move it along minus those two points?
No.
No?
Well, we can move along, we just have staff have the final say, we lose control over what that, that is.
Yeah, exactly.
I think they have an idea, though, on how we feel.
I think they have a great idea.
I don't think it's, I don't think it needs to come back, in my opinion.
Fundamentally, I don't need it to see it back, I think... I fundamentally, I don't need it to see it back. I think we trust in staff and their ability to try and make this more reasonable.
Anyway.
Correct. Correct. So I call for a motion?
Sorry, can can we just recap exactly what?
I don't think we can.
Just so that we're all clear and all on the same page, please.
So we're looking at, um, one concern is the number of accessory. Uh, units over an acre. When now it's it's two for up to one acre, anything over, we have verbiage that could potentially borrow from Mr. Bromberg, which is two per acre up to the five.
Sorry, and there was a mention about usable space on that? Do we want?
Correct, definitely.
On that.
Definitely.
Perhaps we can say on on.
Low twenty percent.
Below twenty percent slopes, yeah.
Perfect.
Work for me.
Yeah, and then and then another concern was just the cost.
Yeah, and again, I don't know if we can formulate a lesser cost for administrative action or if that's set by the city statute code. Lord knows who sets the cost of the administrative action.
If anything else, we're just expressing our concern. We're not setting a number.
Correct. Well, the city council can make those changes because we're just propose, we're just sending it up to them anyways.
Correct.
Okay.
Naren, are you good with that?
Sure, and we just want to make sure that between twelve hundred square feet and two thousand square feet on properties more than one acre, that's an administrative action as well.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
So we'll call for a motion.
Some of my wording. Here we go.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah. Uh, I move to adopt a resolution recommending approval of Z dash S dash two zero two three dash zero zero five. As.
amended.
With our proposed or recommended changes, alterations, modifications to be taken into consideration.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mann. Can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Can we call for a vote? It passes. Fantastic. Thank you very much. We are now on to other.
The motion passes four zero with Commissioner Kennedy absent.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our our next item of agenda is the review of the city of Simi Valley Street. Tree policies and the role of the tree advisory board.
Yes, Chairman Tolson or Deputy Public Works Director is Chris Oberender is here for a presentation. Once he gets set up.
Thanks for, thanks for coming. Checks.
Claudia, can you?
Good evening, Chairperson Tolson, commissioners and members of the public. This evening, staff is presenting to the planning commission a summary of the current city's current street tree and street tree management program, practices and policies used to preserve street trees within the city's urban forest. Currently, the city maintains fifty thousand trees within our urban forest area. About ten thousand of those trees lie within the public right of way. The focus of tonight's discussion is to combine and summarize past and current written policies and practices regarding street trees. Our maintenance team handling the tree right of way work consists of two city street crews, a grounds crew, as well as specialized contractors, who typically handle the larger street tree care services within the city's right of way. The effort focuses primarily on regular trimming to keep the trees healthy. And to meet industry standards for minimizing liability and damage to the public property. During these rate regular maintenance efforts. There is occasionally the need for removal and replacement for of a tree for reasons including poor health, public hazard, and or damage to public or private infrastructure. Staff will also occasionally receive requests from residents or businesses, owners and owners asking the city to remove a street tree. Removal reasons for removal requests may include dislike of the specific species, a desire to eliminate falling leaves, as well as addressing nuisances nuisances such as excessive flowering or fallen fruit. Elimination of an ongoing hazard to public or private property such as damage to a wall or sanitation line may also be cited. Staff periodically reviews these requests, and unless the tree is unhealthy, unsafe, or causing damage beyond the department's reasonable ability to make repairs. Staff will typically deny the request in an effort to preserve the integrity of that portion of our urban forest within the right of way. During this process, staff makes every effort to work with the property owners to help them understand the benefits of trees to the community. And will offer options, including trimming the tree or treating it with an inhibitor to reduce excessive fruit or flowering. In the case of denial by staff to remove a tree, if the requester still desires its removal. They may appeal staff's decision to the planning commission, which has been designated by the city council as the appeal board. They are informed of their appeal option and the steps necessary to go before the hearing board. Staff will then prepare the appeal and present it to the planning commission for their consideration. Should it be determined that a tree will be be removed for either of these situations, then staff will replace trees from with one from our nursery inventory that is of the same variety or will match the street tree theme of the neighborhood as quickly as practical. Should there be a delay due to lack of resources, then the owner may at their discretion obtain a no fee permit and remove and replace the tree at their own cost. The city will assist them with future maintenance as available resources permit. City staff follows a protocol of placing the same or compatible tree species along each street within a neighborhood. Maintaining uniformity in this matter provides the best appearance while also ensuring the most cost effective way for the city to properly maintain the area with uniform trimming schedules per industry standards. This approach is essential to limiting liability from damaged infrastructure, fallen limbs and downed trees. Close oversight in this regard also avoids the potential for undesirable species to be introduced into the area, which have different growth, watering, drought, disease tolerance, or other incompatible maintenance characteristics with those species currently in place. In cases where a tree does not currently exist, a resident may request that a tree be planted adjacent their home. Staff will provide, process these requests, evaluate the best tree meeting the theme for that location, and provide the resident a fifteen gallon tree to plant, again, from our nursery. In these cases, the resident is responsible for planting and taking care of the new tree. Should the resident need help planting the trees, the city staff will be there to assist them. The city has recently begun accepting new requests for street trees following the lifting of recent drought restrictions in the state. Occasionally, trees are damaged unintentionally by accidents or removed by residents who are not aware that removals of trees within the right of way requires that they obtain a permit from the city. In cases where trees are damaged beyond repair due to accidents, staff typically is able to recover these costs through the insurance and claims process. In the case where a resident removes a tree from the right of way without all the registration in the form of an encroachment permit, it has been the practice of staff not to pursue any recovery or replacement cost. This concludes our presentation. Michael Sandoval, who is our city's landscape maintenance supervisor and arborist, is here to in attendance with me tonight, and we are available to answer any questions.
Fantastic presentation. Thank you very much, Mr. Oberender. Uh, any questions?
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Oberender, uh, thank you for coming tonight, by the way. Um, I just, how many requests do you, does the city get for new trees per year, out of curiosity?
For new trees?
Yeah.
I'm gonna have our.
I I know that every once in a while you get complaint, I know you get complaints about, you know, sticky sap and falling leaves and that kind of stuff. But I'm just curious, how many people actually ask for new trees?
Changes from year to year, but we look at about probably two tree requests per week.
Oh, wow. That's interesting. Thank you.
And just just to clarify, if if someone were to have, uh, denied their request for a tree to be removed, and it has to come to our, to our meeting here, is there a charge for that?
But defer to Sean.
A street tree permit, uh, we have.
Appeal request.
Appeal request.
We've had, we've had two, maybe three in the last ten years, so I have to go back in my memory. And I'm thinking somewhere it was around. I don't remember.
I don't know if I have an answer for you on that. We'd have to pull that up.
I just, you know, we're trying to cover our costs here, and I was questioning if this may be pretty low compared to other things that we're trying to cover. Okay, that was it. That's all for, anybody else have questions? Fantastic presentation. Thank you for bringing the the public up to speed and us up to speed, too. Thank you for all you do, both. Next item is to confirm our dates for twenty twenty four. We have a piece of paper with calendar dates and alternates. Pardon? Exactly, exactly. Uh, do we need to approve these dates?
So the recommendation is to approve the regular planning commission meeting dates and suggested meeting date revisions agreed to by the planning commission, if there are any.
I had a a date, uh, request, a date to.
Potential change, yeah.
Uh, instead of June nineteenth, which is Juneteenth, uh, request that that be moved to June twenty sixth.
Any any problems with that?
No.
Sounds good. So aside from what's written, we're gonna change June nineteen to June twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
I will not be here January third for sure, but if you guys have.
We'll try to, we'll try to work without you. Okay. That's it. Okay, let's get back to our. We have someone from the audience wants to come and ask a question. The people have just left, so. Mr. Bromberg, you want to come forward? Gina?
I just had another question, if I may, um, in regards to removing a tree for other reasons besides it's breaching a sewer line and or a wall, it's just a matter of preference, I would say, that there's probably nothing prettier than a jacaranda tree. And probably nothing messier and more obnoxious than the stains it makes on sidewalks with the purple flowers everywhere. So how would it be determined that because I want the jacaranda tree to be removed, but my neighbor thinks it's absolutely stunningly beautiful? That that would be, um, determined, uh, who has the right to determine that I want that removed because of my own desires, if you will, opposed to the neighbors, if you will?
So this is where you ask the question, you sit down, then we maybe ask the staff to, uh, address it. Thank you, Bruce. Mr. Oberender, you heard the question.
Yes, uh, in those question, in those cases, what typically is is not understood with the urban forest is that the amenity of of trees along the parkway and in the street right of way are an amenity to everyone. So in the case of a jacaranda, I'll use my own neighborhood on the west end of town as an example. So when I, when I leave for work every day and when those trees are flowering, they're incredibly beautiful. They're the most amazing thing that's the gateway to my neighborhood that I come and go and I see. So the amenity is on the block, but of course, it's next to someone's house. And and the gentleman mentioned that, you know, they do make a quite a mess when they flower. And and the concern is that the resident next to that that constantly has to deal with that is 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 has concern that that, you know, it always is my job to fix this or do this. Likewise, I have a couple of liquid amber trees on on my, and and those little balls with those little pointy things are constantly in the in the sidewalk, and I have to constantly clean them up. But that's part of the cost of having the beautiful autumn, uh, leaves and the look that it gives to everybody else around the neighborhood. So that's the reason I believe that the tree advisory board is is interested in in looking at those requests and determining what value that gives to the whole neighborhood and community and and not just and then have to weigh is kind of a governing board, what impact removing it would be on the neighborhood. As opposed to the inconvenience that's causing to that particular individual. So I I believe that kind of.
So so staff makes that recommendation or determination, and then there's a vehicle so that in case they don't like that, they can bring it before the tree advisory board.
Exactly.
Hope that answers a question the public might have asked. Okay. So, uh, public hearings were down to oral communications report. Does staff have anything to report?
Yes, Chairman Tolson, members of the planning commission. Um, I will provide you some email correspondence in the next week or so. We have the, um, League of California Cities Planning Commissioners Academy coming up. March sixth to eighth at the Hilton Long Beach in Long Beach. This year, we have, um, funding for one commissioner who may, uh, like to attend. So if, um, you can reach out to me if you're interested, and then we will, um, see how many.
Draw straws.
People we get, then we'll figure out, um, who would pick the longest straw.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
And the other item I have tonight is, um. That, um. We have another departure in the department. That'd be, um, our principal planner, Claudia Pedroso. Um, I'd like to say that she will be retiring at the end of the year. Claudia has started here right around the pandemic in twenty twenty. She's been here three and a half years. She is our, um, planner slash licensed architect. She's had a role in everything architectural that you've seen here. She's had her hands on, um, every presentation and staff report you've seen. She's also worked very diligently on the North Canyons project, the Sanzes and a Plaza project, and our very prominent envisioned Simi Valley specific plan project, which is still being in process. Everyone here in the department thanks her for her service, and she will be missed. I, I'm sure we'll see her at some point in the future on one side of the counter or the other, so. But she has a lot of, uh, things planned for her, uh, next stage of her life. So again, thank you, Claudia, for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your efforts in these last years. It's made a significant difference. And we're we'll miss you, but happy for your retirement. Okay. Do any commissioners have anything to report? Mobile Home Rent Mediation Board. Staff have anything?
No items.
Tree Advisory Board, staff?
No additional items.
This concludes the meeting of December sixth, twenty twenty. This concludes the meeting of December sixth, 2023. This meeting is adjourned.